Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, good. That's good. We're gonna need some crowd participation tonight. My name is Simone Fryerson and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County. I would like to welcome all of you tonight, our co-sponsor, the Community Transportation Committee, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing on the television from home. This forum will be rebroadcast on our three public education and government channels in Iowa City, Corleville, and North Liberty. Please check their websites for the schedules. A little bit about the League of Women Voters is that we are a volunteer organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate. The League does take positions and acts on selected issues which members have studied and agreed upon. We encourage informed citizen participation in government, and membership is open to anyone that is 16 years of age or older. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. We also encourage you to vote on or before November 7th. Please go to the Johnson County Auditor's website to find your polling place and to view the early voting satellite locations. You can also check out vote411.org, which is through the League of Women Voters, and to find out where your polling place is, as well as who your elected officials are. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates solely, and all viable candidates have been invited to participate. League members are distributing cards and pencils throughout the audience so that you may ask questions. You are welcome to submit as many written questions for the candidates as you wish. Please hold up the cards, and a League member will collect them from you throughout the forum. Questions that fall in the same general category may be consolidated to allow us to cover as many topics as possible in the time allotted. If your questions are not addressed, you may contact the candidates directly. Please write legibly for my sanity, for my sake. Campaign literature is welcome outside this room following the forum. We ask that no buttons, signs, or literature be worn or distributed until then. Now to the important stuff, the format for this evening. After the candidates have been introduced, they will each have two minutes for opening remarks. I'll then pose the first question from the League to the candidates. Each candidate will have one minute to respond. We will then turn to your questions. The speaker order will be rotated as audience questions are posed to the candidates. Again, each candidate will have one minute to respond. At about 8:15 PM, we will turn to two-minute closing remarks from each candidate. Now to introduce the candidates. Tonight, we have five candidates running for three four-year term city council seats. We have three running for two-at-large seats: Kingsley Bautchway, the incumbent, Mazaher Saleh, and Angela Winneke. We have two running for one District B seat: Susan Mims, the incumbent, and Ryan Hall. I want to remind the audience that in Iowa City, although some candidates are from District B, all voters citywide will vote for them, as well as for the candidates at large. Let's get started with opening statements. To the candidates, please speak directly into the microphone so that you can be heard here and over the televised broadcast. We'll start with Angela Winneke. You have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. I think I know some of you in the room who have grown up in Iowa City. But most of my focus has been working with younger people, mostly young university students at the University of Iowa. I grew up in Iowa City, graduated from West High School. I mean, graduated from the University of Iowa with a degree in Political Science, which I've not used until now. I work for a locally owned business in Iowa City and have helped pretty run the operations for the last several years. I've been with it almost 10 years. And in the last six months, I have worked with the Iowa City North Town District as my time there, not an official elected person, but an appointed one. And I have... Sorry. It was my time growing up, and I was going to experience a lot of the issues that I think we're talking about currently, and I don't think enough has changed. And I think a lot of what needs to change is kind of the leadership that's representing our city council. I think that we make up a good population of who needs to represent our city council. I have a lot of respect for everyone who's currently serving and who has served in the past, but I do think that we need to bring more women into positions of leadership, more women of color and people of color, to lead our continual diversifying community that we live in. And I think that even though we might... we won't all be on city council after this election, that I think we have a good group of candidates that will give a fair representation of our community.
Okay, Kingsley Bautchway?
All right. Thank you. Thank you to the audience, thank you to League of Women Voters, and everybody in the audience. I think I know some of the faces as well. My name is Kingsley Bautchway. I'm currently on city council. I've had the opportunity over the last seven years. I was forgetting law school for many different reasons. I've been over... I've been in different governmental structures for the last seven years. I've worked in nonprofits, I've worked at the county, worked at the school district, and I've obviously worked for the city in my role. So that has given me experience, and it made me think of, I guess, your slogan that you use as "be informed and seek solutions," which I think is a really powerful slogan to have when we need to make sure that we have leadership in charge of our city, but also leadership just in general, that is informed about what residents are talking about and seeking solutions across the board. So when I initially started this campaign, and it's been kind of a running campaign because I get a chance to talk to residents on a regular basis, but, you know, to really get a more of a comprehensive approach and discussion with broader Iowa City, I wanted to be informed, or be more informed as far as how are things going. One of the questions that Solomon and I, my campaign manager, asked people outside of talking about our three issues was focusing on, "What do you love about Iowa City?" And instead of saying, "What do you hate about Iowa City?" It was, "What do you like to see different about Iowa City? What would you like to see changed?" And I heard a lot of different things. Some of those things are things that we're already working on, which is affordable housing, which is another huge proponent, and something I ran on four years ago, and we've taken some huge steps. The second is economic development, ensuring that we have economic development across the board, because it's very important for our community to see that we are entrepreneurial hub. And last but not least, is mental health. And that's something that has resounded not only from my prior experience, but also what people were talking about when I was knocking those doors on the street, sometimes in the cold and sometimes in the rain, getting out to voters and wanting to make sure that we were meeting them at those issues. My son's here, so I apologize as well. I'm dedicated to that work. You know, as soon as... Oh, my time's up. I'm dedicated to that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Kingsley. Next, we'll have Mazaher Saleh.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming, and thank you for the League of Women Voters, for putting this together. My name is Mazaher Saleh. Hi, Kim. Can you guys hear me? I came from Sudan 20 years ago. I came to Virginia, where I met my husband, started family, again, my citizenship, and I moved to Iowa City almost 70 years ago. And I came to study, but I fell in love with Iowa and decided to stay. When I came, I joined people who are really passionate about social justice, and we found together the Center for Worker Justice. And I'm a part also of Police Review Board, Community Police Review Board, and Iowa Valley Global Food Project, and the Sudanese Community, and the Iowa City Roundtable, City Manager Roundtable meeting. At the Center for Worker Justice, I think I have, again, a lot of experience bringing people together from different backgrounds. And we brought people together to raise the minimum wage in Johnson County, and we recovered like $60,000 of unpaid wages. And we introduced like new program, like the Community ID, for three years right now, improving the relationship between minority and local enforcement in this community, which is great. What else? You know, I just, I think I'm running because I think I have the experience and the ability of bringing people together. As a community organizer and family advocate, I can bring this kind of community movement for idea and solution to the city council table. I'm passionate about it, and I know the hard work it takes to make it happen. I have three issues: economic development for all, transportations, and economic development for all and transportations, and affordable housing. God, I don't like that. It makes me nervous. But those are my three issues, and that's it. Stop.
Thank you, Mazaher Saleh. Now, Ryan Hall.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. I really want to especially thank the League of Women Voters and our co-sponsor, the Community Transportation Committee, for holding this forum. You know, it's events like these that really help our community become more informed and activated to get out and vote, because we need that. So my name is Ryan Hall. I am a gender queer feminist who hopes to continue fighting for justice in all forms: social, environmental, racial, the whole gamut of justice. I'm a non-traditional student at the University of Iowa studying environmental planning because I believe that climate change is our biggest challenge and opportunity, and that water is life, and that we can really transform our community to become radically more sustainable. I took three gap years because college was financially out of reach for me, but I chose to serve three years in AmeriCorps, where I was a tutor and a mentor at a school-to-prison pipeline school in Columbus, Ohio. I was a wildland firefighter with the U.S. Forest Service in Colorado, and then I became a green energy expert in Decora, Iowa, mainly serving low-income households. I served because I believe in a purpose greater than self. After serving three years, I bicycled across the country from the coast of Oregon to Washington, D.C., to speak about bipartisan action on climate change. During that trip, I decided to move to Iowa City to finish my education and join a wonderful and vibrant community. So I'm originally from the Detroit area and come from a union and working-class background. So despite being a Michigander, I chose to move to Iowa for a green job, for a brighter future. And many folks in this community come from outside of Iowa City and share this same hope. So I want Iowa City to remain and build upon being a safe space and a strong community, but I want Iowa City to work for all people, not just the wealthy. So I'm running for city council because there is, in this community, there is a large disparity in wealth, income, and opportunity, and we see this segregation happen along race and class lines. And I hope to reverse this trend and bring about a more equitable community.
Ryan, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Susan Mims.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the League and the Transportation Committee, and thank you to all of you that are out here tonight. I'm a longtime member of Iowa City. I came here to finish up my college education, and like so many people, ended up staying. Iowa City is an incredibly unique community and one that is very dear to my heart. I plan to stay here. I have no intention of... our kids are grown and gone, but it's probably a plan to stay for the rest of my life. Because of that, I care about what we do here, how we do it, and how that affects the people within our community. I came from a dairy farm in Vermont, initially wanted to go to veterinary school, discovered that was harder than medical... harder to get into than medical school back then, and ended up here at the university and got two engineering degrees before I went on to teach at Kirkwood Community College for 18 years, and then now work as a financial planner. During those years here in Iowa City, I've been very much involved in the community, from working with the school district in athletic clubs to serving on the Iowa City Community School District Board of Directors, where I was president of the school board, been involved certainly on the council for the last eight years, chairing the Economic Development Committee. And currently, one of the most important things I think I'm involved in is working with a number of individuals from the nonprofits, from the university, electeds, to try and develop an access center, which will be a place in our community for members of the community, for the police to drop someone off who has had a crisis but really doesn't need to be in the emergency room or in jail. And this is a major program. A lot of communities across the country are doing this. It tends to be a jail diversion process. It also keeps people out of our emergency rooms, which obviously is a very costly place for people to be. So thank you, and I look forward to answering questions this evening.
Thank you to all five of our candidates for your opening statements. Now to questions. And the first question will come from the League of Women Voters. Could be a sign. No. It's kind of calling. So the first question will come from the League of Women Voters. Iowa's bottle bill has been a huge success, with eight out of every 10 Iowans supporting it. Seventy-six percent of plastic, carbonated drink bottles are recovered compared to only 26 percent of non-bottle bill-covered bottles. Because of this, states with deposit laws have much higher beverage recycling rates. Local businesses are divided on this issue. Please tell us if you support keeping or repealing the bottle bill and why. Each candidate will have one minute to respond. And we'll start with Angela.
I feel like we're probably setting a bad example with all these plastic bottles up here, but I do... I do support it. I guess I grew up in this state with it always in existence for the majority of my life, I guess. But I do think that we have to continue to create and support efforts where we are keeping plastic and other materials out of our landfills. And I think that... I don't know why anyone up here wouldn't support it, but I guess I do support it, and I hope that we can encourage our local businesses that maybe do not agree with it in helping ways to create easier recycling systems in our community to make it more cost-effective for them.
I didn't know if you were gonna say it every time or not.
Yeah, I'll say it every time.
I was wondering. Okay, on ahead.
Kingsley?
Yes, I'm definitely gonna support keeping the bottle bill. I'm definitely gonna support keeping the bottle bill. I had a conversation with a couple of people, folks in the community specifically and from the environmental community, focused on this key issue, alerting me to this key issue that honestly has kind of gone under the radar until a recent report, maybe about a month ago, in talking about it. And so, definitely supportive. I've grown up in multiple areas where this hasn't been the case, and the incentivization that is lost from having this is dramatic. You see, when I've traveled to different cities, I normally call them out from having dirty streets or really littered streets, and it's because of that lack of the bottle bill. Obviously, there's other things that, you know, may pertain to that as well, but in general, having that particular piece of legislation, I think, is important, especially for our Iowa City community. We need to ensure that we're educating businesses about why it's important, talking to businesses, really informing and ensuring that they have all the information. And it's just been generally supportive, especially of multi-residential recycling as well.
Mazaher?
Yes, of course, I'm gonna be like very supportive of this. And I think, yeah, we need to keep our... we need to keep the earth green, and we need to continue the offer to eliminate those the plastic and recycling. And also, I think we need to bring business together and sit down and discuss this so they can... and see their view, and so we can move forward with this. Thanks.
Ryan?
Yeah, I think a really important part of this is trying to call in those businesses that aren't as supportive of a bottle bill and try to communicate the greater need that, you know, I'm supportive of a bottle bill because I think that we should have policy that reflects our values and our vision for where we should be moving. Ideally, we should be moving away from a throwaway culture that produces waste in the first place, but since we are trying to manage our existing waste system, I am supportive. When I grew up in Michigan, we had a $10 per bottle, and it was really effective in curbing waste. So I'd be really supportive of this bill, but I think, and I echo some of what has been said already, that, you know, it's really crucial to have healthy communication amongst those who may fall on different sides of the issue. So ideally, you know, we move away from a throwaway culture, and I'd be happy to come up with some more policy solutions and talk to folks about that, but in the meantime, I'm supportive of the bottle bill.
Susan?
Definitely supportive of the bottle bill. I grew up in Vermont, which is probably one of the leaders in terms of environmental law, along with Oregon. And what I would actually like to see us is expand the bottle bill. While right now it applies mostly to just carbonated beverages, I would like to see it apply to all beverage bottles. I think that is the incentive for people to recycle oftentimes, instead of just throwing them in the trash. So I think that incentivization is really important. I think in terms of the businesses that are not particularly supportive, quite frankly, they're looking at it from their bottom line: the staffing that it takes, how dirty it can be, et cetera, the machines they have to buy. I think what we have to do is work with those businesses and also look at other locations where it can be easy and convenient for people to recycle. One of the things we have in Iowa City, I think, is great, is we have the can shed down on the south side. You can go down there and you get a big plastic bag with their name on it. You basically fill that thing full, you take it down, you don't have to count the cans, and they give you the money for the bag. So it's an easy and quick way to do it versus one time at a... one at a time.
Thank you all. The next question will come from our co-sponsor, the Community Transportation Committee. Many Iowa City residents have trouble getting to and from work... excuse me, in the morning, evening, and on Sundays due to bus service hours. Do you support expanding transit service hours to better meet the needs of our community? And we'll start with Kingsley this time.
I'm gonna go back to that slogan again and really talk about kind of being informed and seeking solutions. And so I think the first thing is yes. I would be very supportive. One of the things we need to do is gather data. Survey the community, not only ridership that's currently riding, but also individuals that may be interested in riding, but maybe not, or haven't been because of the fact that we don't have ridership or expanded ridership. There's different communities that do different things. We've talked about this at prior forums, focusing on a hybrid model, looking at express service, focusing on ride-share, not necessarily in speaking with like Uber or Lyft, but ride-share from van pools or other things, working with employment centers and businesses to really accommodate and find out what's going on from a worker's standpoint, and then also looking at it from a regional standpoint as well, ensuring that we're having communication across the region. I used to be a cam bus driver myself, a bionic bus driver, and so I know a little bit about the transportation system from that standpoint, and know, you know, I was very safe on the road. But I do think it's important to have more of a comprehensive system, and what I've been talking about is an actual comprehensive transportation plan.
Thank you, Kingsley. Your time is up. Sorry. Mazaher?
Yes, you know, I have been talking to a lot of people in this community about this issue, from students to elderly people in this community to low-wage workers. And I found out we really need to string our transportation system. This has been one of the biggest issues in my campaign. You know, we need to make it possible... we need to string our transportation system to make it possible for more people to go more places at more time. At the same time, we don't keep people on the bus for a long time. This is, you know, an issue for workers who cannot even go to the... like, on Sunday, they cannot go to work, and also in the evening shift. I know a lot of people suffering from this issue, and I will do my best by bringing people together, even speaking to the transportation directors, and the acting transportation director, and he told me there is... they're gonna conduct route study next year. This is our chance to bring all the voice in one table so we can find a solution to this outstanding, you know, problem.
Thank you, Mazaher. Ryan?
So I'm really happy to know folks like Jeremy Ensley of the CTC, and I will be trying to tap them, folks who are more knowledgeable of this issue, to hear from their solutions. And I know the CTC released a survey where they found that 75% of those surveyed had a hard time finding a bus from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And if... that reveals a great need in our community, and the city should be able to respond to that need. And, you know, we are having to manage with a tight revenue stream, and it's harder to provide for the funds that are needed to expand our services, but it's crucial that we do so because these are the folks who are most vulnerable if they lack access to adequate transportation, and they're hurting on a daily basis. I'll support a survey, but we need to implement real common sense solutions right now. And frequency is an issue. Our current system of a hub-and-spoke is not as efficient as it can be, and I'd be happy to collaborate with partners in our region like Corleville to try and change our system. Thank you.
All right, Susan?
The challenge here is the budget. I support expanding the services that we have. We have to find an efficient way to do that. When we were putting in kind of some final ideas before we really get into the budget season, rather than putting in a specific project, my recommendation to staff, and I got support from the council, was that we move up the survey and the planning for adjusting our transportation system. As soon as we get our new transportation director in place, we will be doing the study of the routes. We do operate to cover the entire city right now, which means a lot of places don't get service very often. So we have to look at where do we need the service most, who needs the service the most, and look at potentially van pools. I've talked about even using vouchers for taxi cabs. I think those are ways that we may be able to expand service into the evening and on Sunday, because running fixed bus routes when you have very, very low ridership is an incredibly expensive and inefficient way of using resources.
Thank you, Susan.
I think this is a topic that's been brought up at every forum, and we all, I think, generally agree that we need to complete the study sooner than later, and all support expanding our transportation system, and also in looking at alternative transportation methods that have already been mentioned, like car pools or van pools, not having to just simply look at adding buses or bus routes, but looking at alternative ways, working with the various transportation departments within the county, the university, Corleville, the city of Iowa City, and working together in better servicing areas for people that don't have their own modes of transportation, and I think really expanding into servicing people who work in the service industry, which includes late nights and Sundays, so.
All right, thank you. Our first question from the audience. With the integration of Iowa City School District schools with respect to free and reduced lunch recipients, many students have dropped out of after-school activities due to the lack of transportation. How would you reallocate transportation resources to allow all students to enjoy equal access to after-school activities? We'll start with Mazaher.
I'm just gonna continue what I said, really, because, you know, I didn't have time. We just... same thing that I always said, we need to bring people together, and including like students and school representatives to like to find out solution to this, you know, outgoing issues. I know a lot of people from the minority communities who cannot go to, like, after this king, to the, you know, after-school activities. Transportation is really an issue in this community. Like, two years ago, Iowa... almost three years ago, I was one also of the rider who would take like the transportation. And I know a lot of people who cannot even find the transportation on the evening. This is not only affecting a student, it's affecting everyone. But of course, we're gonna bring the voice of the student to find out the solution for them. I'm good about bringing people to the table, and I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
I've personally seen what this negative effect has on our community, and not just this one. When I was in Columbus, Ohio, when I served at an underfunded high school, many students were bussed in from places that were not near the school. And so as a result, the students really were denied after-school opportunity, which is proven to increase the efficacy of their education, their abilities to participate in larger society. And, you know, we're seeing that shift take place here in Iowa City, too. And, you know, I'm gonna do all that I can to try and provide better transportation for those students who really need that opportunity, but I think this is also a conversation of a move away from neighborhood schools. I think that it's crucial that we increase the walkability, bikeability of our schools so that our children are proximate to their schools and proximate to their neighbors, so that we're building community and not busing out so far away that we can't build that vibrant community that I know that Iowa City is incredibly capable of.
Thank you, Ryan. Susan?
I think this is a part of the whole analysis that we have to do. One of the things that the city has done in the past is changed bus routes to better serve the high schools, so students didn't have to be on the buses as long, didn't have to go downtown and change buses. And I would say this is part of what we have to do with that analysis, is get an idea of where those students live, what time activities are getting done, coordinate with the school district in terms of trying to run some bus routes and/or other modes of transportation to help students in doing that. We're gonna always have this We're going to always have this issue because when you have a community geographically as large as we are, with only three junior highs and only three comprehensive high schools at the public level, there's no way that everybody is going to be within walking distance or biking distance of the high school or the junior high that they go to. So this will always be an issue, and I think we have to work, as I say, with this reanalysis of the whole system of how we can better serve students in those later hours.
I think as we address the transportation issue as a community, bringing the school district and parents, various parent organizations to the table in this conversation, addressing the transportation issue is really important. I think we have over 14,000 students in our school district, and, you know, growing up, for me, it's a, something I guess I can personally relate to, growing up in Iowa City, I was limited into the after-school programs I was able to participate in simply because we lived in neighborhoods kind of outside of the, you know, center of Iowa City or away from the schools where most of the programming happened. And so I learned to take a city bus at a young age. I learned to use can bus routes, and we were lucky to have neighbors that were, you know, able to allow us into car pools because my parents worked all the time. But I think that we have to involve the Iowa City Community School District in conversations in expanding and improving our transportation system as well as several of the parent organizations.
Thank you, Angela. Kingsley?
So I talked about it a little bit from the standpoint of a comprehensive transportation plan. You know, at least in board meeting, well, let me back it up a little bit. You know, one, I think we need to do the survey, and I think it needs to be looked at comprehensively. I know that the school district and about, not this last board meeting, but the board meeting before, had talked about doing another survey because there had been significant questions about the needs from students' after-school activities. I do want to focus on some other pieces that may not necessarily be a part of the question just because I have some understanding of this need. I know of a lot of our students that work, and so it's not just necessarily looking at it from an after-school standpoint, so we have to think about transportation. I know some of our, regionally as well, because some of our students, I know for a fact, work at the Corleville Mall. We also have to look at it from a community hub that some, that our school, schools serve as, because a lot of parents, just general community members, access our schools for various different reasons and need access to the facility at different times as well. And so I know this question was focused on students, but I do think, again, we need to look at it comprehensively and consider all those options.
Thank you. Next question. Do any of the candidates have any plans to extend disability rights in Iowa City? We'll start with Ryan.
Accessibility is a large issue that is often not spoken about, and it is, it is a crime that we don't, we don't put that at the, at the front of our discussion. So I'd be happy to learn more about the issue, to speak with folks like Harry Olmsted, who's a leader in increasing the accessibility of our, of our community, to all folks regardless of their ability. And so I know that perhaps businesses or certain buildings in our community are not fully ADA accessible, and we must address that. We must see it as an issue, take it seriously, and then put some action behind it. And so I'll be, I'll be listening to folks who know more about the issue and who have the solutions, just need, and they need to be implemented at the city level.
Thank you, Susan.
If I understood the question, it asked if any of us have plans to extend disability rights. Quite frankly, I would have to ask the question back, is in what regard are people looking? And I'd also have to ask the question, what authority does the city have to do that versus the state or the federal government? I honestly don't know. In terms of accessibility for the current, like ADA laws, the city is working hard to continually increase our number of curb ramps, et cetera, and work with businesses downtown to try and develop some solutions for some of these older buildings. But when it comes to the actual question of extending disability rights, again, I would have to talk to people in the community in terms of what they're interested in, what specific areas they're talking about, and how that works with both state and federal law.
Thank you. Angela?
I think I'm going to have to echo the prior two candidates in their responses and, I guess, needing to be better educated on exactly what rights, or if there are specific rights that they're asking about. But I do think that our community and our city leadership has made the correct moves in helping expand accessibility. For me, I just mostly know about the changes that have happened downtown that have impacted our community in widening our sidewalks and making sure that our sidewalks are usable by everyone, especially on Washington Street. I think with some of the ped mall improvements, it'll create accessibility throughout the ped mall for everyone, and also, I mean, in accordance to ADA compliance, the changes that we've made, like on all the corners and ramps and, sorry, street corners, there we go, street corners and ramps so that people can.
Thank you, Angela. Sorry, your time is up. Kingsley?
So I would say emphatically, yes. I do echo the comments that have been made previously in the sense that I think I need to get more information as far as what the actual need, you know. Again, from a council perspective, we have increased funding over the last, I want to say, three budget cycles, focusing on how we can improve curb ramps. I mean, these things have already been talked about. I will say that, you know, I know that currently, you know, when we're looking at state or local governments, you know, Title II is the particular law that focuses on, from an ADA standpoint, and the reason why I know that is I'm currently getting my ADA certification, and that's something that Simon, as well, our assistant to the city manager, has gotten and informed me of it as well. But we need to talk to the community. I think in general, we need to look at it from an education perspective as well, making sure that we clearly have an understanding of what that definition is when we're truly talking about a disability, because I would, I would think that we, we may not necessarily have a clear understanding of that and wanting to move forward in that particular way.
Thank you, Kingsley. Mazza here?
Really, my goal as a city council is to make this community work for everyone, including the people with disability. I think I need, we need to continue the offer that the current council are doing to make sure, like, they have access to everything from building, entertainment, to everything in the community. And I will really work, and I think everything can be possible by bringing the people who are affected by the issues and give them a seat at the table and discuss the issue. And that's what my strategy will be, bringing those people, bringing people, et cetera, and bringing everybody to the table so we can discuss these issues more further, and of course, we need to find a solution to it. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next question says, working-class people make up the vast majority of Iowa City residents. At the same time, it is very expensive to live in Iowa City. Considering this, what policies would you consider to help our working people? Would you consider the minimum wage, and also, how would that affect the affordability of housing here and the crisis that occurred with the Rose Oaks apartments? We'll start with Susan, I believe.
Yes. A few pieces there. Let me start with affordable housing. The council has passed, and I certainly supported, a 15-point Affordable Housing Action Plan. A number of those items have already been completed and will continue to work on that. Supported the minimum wage, I did, and the council did, after the county had passed that, I think it's probably everybody in the room knows, basically, the state has taken the right away from cities and counties to pass minimum wage laws. We are doing some form-based code work, which will allow us to, developers to do some development that instead of just big tracts of single-family homes, can have multiple kinds of housing, from single-family homes, duplexes, multi-units, that hopefully will be at different price points, which will offer more affordable housing across the area. Those are probably some of the bigger things, along with changing some rules in terms of codes to make housing safer, and also balancing the rental versus ownership.
Thank you, Susan. Angela?
I'm really sorry, that was a long question. Can you read it one more time?
Sure. Working-class people make up the vast majority of Iowa City residents. At the same time, it is very expensive to live in Iowa City. Considering this, what policies would you consider to help our working population, take into account affordable housing and the crisis that occurred in the case of Rose Oaks, as well as would a hike in supporting a $15 minimum wage be helpful in that regard?
I think that as a community with a work, with the work of a lot of organizations, one being the Center for Workers' Justice, we have made the, the issue of minimum wage or a livable wage in Iowa City very apparent and obvious out there. And I think part of what we need to do as a community and as city leaders is that we need to bring different groups of people together and find a way to encourage, I guess, a higher minimum wage. I think a lot of businesses have maintained the 10-10. I do think that that was the right move in our community to increase minimum wage, but apparently, you know, our state doesn't care as much as we do. But that we need to bring businesses to the table as well as other leaders in the community and, and the people who are working at these hourly jobs.
Thank you, Angela.
We don't get a chance. Sorry. That's okay.
Kingsley?
Yeah, so, you know, I'm going to echo some of the comments that have already been made from the Affordable Action Plan. I mean, this is something that I've championed for the last four years. I think that at times I was even, I was even told that, you know, I would mention affordable housing, even when we weren't talking about it, just to make sure it was on the hearts and minds of our council members. And so affordable housing is, affordable housing is really important, especially following up the action plan. What I've spoken about is really looking at increasing the timetable from that perspective, because I do think it's a crisis and something that needs to be addressed more quickly than it's currently being addressed. I do want to look at it from a standpoint of looking at it holistically as well, and so we talk about affordable housing, I want to look at transportation, some of those other things, and really kind of develop a metric point, but we can look at what truly affordability means from that standpoint. And last but not least, addressing minimum wage, I know I'm running out of time. One of the things that I brought to the council level that I'd like to bring up again is that my discussions with Paul Sigafos around a community rights ordinance that could look at how we can fight the state on this particular issue.
Thank you. Mazza here?
For me, two minutes is not enough. I will try my best. Affordable, you know, Rose Oaks was disaster. The city Affordable Housing Action Plan is a good step to move forward, but we can still find a creative solution to work for both developer and residents. Like Forest View is a good model for how we can, those people are benefiting. I'm proud working with those people for one year and a half right now. We brought the tenant together to have this creative solution where the tenant will have access to, you know, like, better houses than what they have, and the developer will use tax credit. You know, this is creative solution, would like to use it as a model in Iowa City. Talking about minimum wage, I think my record's clear on that with the Center for Worker Justice. We being doing it, we raised it, when the money reduced, we saw that our community is better than that. That's why we reached out to, you know, to all the business in our community, and 150 businesses sign up to move this community forward and keep 10-10.
And I'll continue that sentiment. It was great to see this community-led effort with the state's legislature acting against what we at the community level had decided at the county level to, for 10-10 and to, for an increasing minimum wage, and that bringing it to a community level is really impactful, because we're bringing businesses in, customers, residents, and it's crucial to do if we're to have this sort of comprehensive solution. So as far as what the city can do, our contracts can be union labor. Our TIF policy can support union labor. I come from a union household, and I'm going to continue to support union labor wherever it is to be found and however the city can manage that. I would echo that what happened at Rose Oaks is a tragedy, and that must never happen again. The effects of displacement on low-income folks, on mainly folks of color, places a huge impact in our, our community and displaces them. And if we don't have policies that are proactive in place to prevent this from happening, then it can happen again, where developers are prioritized over the rights of residents.
Thank you, Ryan. Susan, did you start the last?
I did.
Okay, I'll ask this question, Angela, you'll be up first. As more LGBTQIA issues become more relevant, specifically with the current administration, how will you advocate for Iowa City's LGBTQIA community? And could you also give, could you also give some insight as to, as to do what the gender, as to what gender queer means to you and how it affects the way you walk through life and how it pertains to the city council?
Also, not a one-minute question, but I think that one that we, as a community, address well. We have a very welcoming community and a community that welcomes everyone, and I think that one of the changes that I want to see in leadership is not just one of appearance, I guess, but one of different understanding, that I think that as we all learn and grow and learn about identities and gender identity, just in our society in general, you know, there, there's no more straight, or gay, or gay, or lesbian, or bi, or, you know, single-term identifiers anymore, I guess, in our society. And I think that we need to educate people, and part of that education is putting people who are, who identify differently in leadership roles and allow them to speak.
Thank you, Angela. Kingsley?
So this is, this is something that I'm a huge advocate for, in general, looking at our policies and practices from a city council standpoint. I'm doing it currently at the school district level, many nights, actually, three nights so far, and one more night, not next Wednesday, but the Wednesday afterwards, focusing on, from that standpoint, how we're, how we ensure that we're inclusive. One of the conversations that I've had rather recently, maybe it was before Pride, was talking about, and this is kind of going back to the, what does gender queer mean to me, talking about how even though we have policies and practices in place, and even though I think we got an A-plus, I mean, a recent rating from our municipality index, I do think it's important to think about, you know, truly, how are we empower our LGBT community to speak about, do they truly feel safe in our community? And I've heard from many that that's not the case, and so we have to move beyond our policies and practices, ensure that we're empowering, obviously, as Angela said, from a leadership standpoint, but also from a community standpoint, in putting people in power, in positions of power and other things.
Thank you, Kingsley. That one minute is really tough. Mazza here?
I guess, for me, I am going to say again, we need our city to be work for everyone. And when, and the city will work well when everyone, regardless of who they are, fully participate and show up, and they have, and they have a seat at the table. And that's my goal. As a Muslim person, I can relate to them. I can, I can relate to this group because I don't like to be discriminated because I'm Muslim. That's why I will give, really make sure everyone have a seat at the table, everyone can participate, nobody should be discriminated, again, is because of like certain way that they identify themselves. And I will support any offer that, you know, to make this policy clear in this community.
Thank you. Ryan?
So I will be happy to advocate on behalf of the LGBTQIA+ community as someone who identifies as gender queer and pansexual. But I'm encouraged by things that promote this sort of safety, the A-plus rating, but if you were to ask a black trans woman in our community whether we deserve that rating, I think that they would say no. That we still live in a very hostile community to many people who live on the margins, who are, who express themselves differently, and we need to be really conscious of that. And that, you know, this, this community should be as safe for a black trans woman as it is for a cis-het white man. And that I will be happy to work with different nonprofits, different student groups, like Spectrum UI, and the school district to encourage this, this expression that is welcome in our community. And I think it's important for representation as well to have someone who is queer on our city council, because they feel the pulse more of the community, of their needs and their concerns, and I'd be happy to, to be a voice, but to always be listening to what those concerns are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Susan?
Would certainly advocate for people regardless of how they identify in terms of their participation and their safety within our community. It's absolutely essential. Kingsley mentioned the city did get a 100% score on this rating, but, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean anything to the individual if they don't feel safe within the community. I think that what we have to do at the city level is make sure that, at the best we can do, that there's no discrimination going on, that we have events, and we do, that make people feel welcome. I think the university is a huge part of what makes this a very positive. a very positive city for people who identify differently. I think that when we look at that and having people feel comfortable speaking out, I think more education. I think a lot of people, if they don't travel in those circles with people who identify differently, really don't know a lot about it and what that means and how people in that situation are affected. So I think the additional communication and listening to people is absolutely essential.
Thank you. Our next question, why do you think minority voter participation is particularly low in Iowa City, and what can be done to change that? I believe we'll start with Kinsley.
Thank you, Maza here. To me, it's a lack of engagement. You know, when we've talked about issues, even looking at it from a national, even state level, regardless of party, it's just a lack of engagement and consistent engagement across the board. It's something that I've spoken about, something that it's a huge issue for me. And it's something that I've talked about at other legal cities meetings. I went to the National Legal Cities meeting and met with the Vice Mayor West from Charlottesville and talked to him about this particular issue, because it was very important, not only to what he was facing in his community, and that was before the incident that happened, but what we're facing in our community as well. It has to be engagement, it has to be consistent, and it has to be around showing that, not only from a city council perspective, just from a general community perspective, that we care. And that message isn't always articulated. And when that message is articulated, it sometimes isn't empowering. And so focusing on those issues, I think, is very important as we think about overall engagement.
Thank you. Maza here?
Yeah. You know, just by talking to the community, I can answer that question. They feel they have been ignored. That's why they don't do that. You know, my campaign has not become like a regular campaign. My campaign was like educational campaign for minority people, including my community, you know. Throughout this campaign, I've been reaching to people. The first time, when I told my own community, I'm running for city council, they told me the first question, what that? You know, people, even the, like, minority community, they don't know, you know, how the government work. We have to do a lot of education through this campaign. Myself, I knocked two doors, and I'm very proud, you know, that Johnson County will see new voter this year. You know, they never been participating. And I'm gonna continue doing this offer, so I can have all the people in this community, including minority, to be, especially minority, to participate. Because to express your right, you know, you have to exercise it, so you can have your right.
Thank you. Ryan?
I think this has really made clear. I was in the Broadway neighborhood yesterday near Wetherby Park and reaching out to people who, they told us, you know, nobody, no candidates come out here. Nobody speaks to us. And, you know, we feel like we're in a fractured part of the community, where we're not taken seriously, where our concerns are not heard. And that's not something that I want to continue happening in this community. I want to be advocating and encouraging more people to go out into communities that they maybe don't feel comfortable around or have very little experience with. And, you know, it's, especially at the national level, seeing what we have to vote for, it's not very inspiring for folks to turn out to vote. And so, I've been recently elected the affirmative action chair of the Johnson County Democrats, which is a temporary position. I don't want to hold that for too long. But I want to bring more people into the party, into politics, and do more voter education, get them involved, because it's crucial that we extend democracy to all people, regardless of country of origin or skin color.
Thank you, Ryan. That minute really is tough.
I think it's good.
Susan?
People have to be concise. I would agree that there's, I think there's two really big things. I think it's that lack of engagement. People are very busy with their own lives. They're busy going to work. They're busy taking care of their kids. They're busy working maybe a couple of jobs. Lots of times, that low voter participation is not just a racial issue, it's also a socioeconomic issue. And so, it's people not necessarily taking the time, having the time to know what's going on. I think Ryan made a good point. When you, what you see and hear in the news so much is more at that state and national level, and you aren't really excited about what you're seeing or hearing there that feels like it's going to have a good impact on you. It's hard to get really excited about getting out to vote. So I think that increase in engagement in our community, getting people to know other people, having people understand what the city council really does and how it does impact them. Because I think a lot of people, when you look nationally, more people vote when there's a national election than they do when there's a state, and more people vote when there's a state election than they do when there's a local election.
Thank you, Susan.
I really hope that when this election is over and we analyze everyone who got out to vote, that we see the most diverse population of people in Iowa City having voted this election, because I think we have a very diverse group of people representing our community, running for our city council. And I think that is extremely important, as well as everything everyone else has said, obviously engaging the minority community, providing access to information to the minority community and to those of a lower socioeconomic, you know, status. I think we do tend to forget, we kind of push people of color and poor people out to the outer edges of our community, and then we don't have transportation for them to get to a voting poll or voting booth or, you know, opportunities for them to get downtown and hear what our city council has to say, and then get home safely. But I think in creating ways to engage those community members and us getting out there.
Thank you, Angela. Okay. Another transportation-related question. Would you support revising city ordinances to allow advertising on buses and bus shelters to increase revenue for the transit system?
In fact, I really talked about this with Acting Transportation Director, Mark, and I asked him this question, is that something like you're thinking of doing it? And he said, yeah, that's something that it will be in consideration also. And myself, I will support if that will give more money to the, you know, to the budget of them. I know that they are working on, like, enterprise budget, which is self-sufficient, and they don't have anything on the, like, on the general funding. But if this will give them more, so we can have more transportation system, more money, that will be great. Yeah, I will support this kind of effort, yeah.
Ryan?
Yeah, I think this is sort of a common sense solution to a lacking revenue stream for transportation. If this is gonna provide more transportation, more efficient, then I would be supportive, so long as we're not advertising things like chewing tobacco or cigarettes or, yeah, we need to be conscious of what we're advertising as well. But, you know, I think that this is a very easy solution to expand. And also, to the point of shelters, there aren't a ton of shelters for a lot of spots for bus stops. So perhaps an advertisement could help sponsor a bus shelter so that people aren't freezing as they're waiting far too long for a bus.
Susan?
I would definitely support our looking at advertising, both on our buses and our shelters, as an increase in revenue. As Maza here mentioned, it is a plan where our budget is such that the revenues from transit support transit. They don't, we don't use any general fund money. But obviously, those funds are limited from federal and state. So I think looking at unique ways where we can increase those revenues to provide more access for people for transportation in the community. I do think we could have a challenge on what we advertise and what we don't, because when you're a municipality, you have some considerations that you can't just say you don't like something and don't want to advertise it. So I think that could also be a challenge of what people would find acceptable and not acceptable, and what control we would actually have over that. But I would certainly be willing to look at it.
Angela?
I definitely would support looking at this mode of raising funds for our transportation department. I think it's interesting, and I do really love the idea of having businesses sponsor shelters at bus stops, because, you know, if it's raining or cold, which is like half the year in Iowa, it's really hard to stand out at those bus stops and wait. But I think that this can be a part that we include on this comprehensive study and plan that we have for expanding our transportation department and a really great way to fund it.
Let me be somewhat brief as well, because I think that many of the comments have already been said. I'd be supportive of it as well. You know, just going back to what we've been talking about from a transportation standpoint, you know, making sure that we've looked at not only different routes and some of those other things, but to me, it's just all interconnected. You know, I wouldn't want to see something that we're really spinning to the hilt from a transportation standpoint, and then this revenue stream that we'd be supportive by this effort wouldn't necessarily even put a dent in it. And so, thinking about that comprehensively is a huge focus of mine, and I would be supportive of it as well.
All right. The next question is, what do you think of the quality and status of Iowa City roads? Do you think they need to be improved? How will you pay for those repairs? We'll start with Ryan.
As someone who bicycles around most everywhere, I can tell you, some roads are pretty hostile to all forms of transportation, whether you're walking, spraining an ankle, or, you know, pop a tire. It's definitely, this is an ongoing issue for all communities. But this is tough, because we'll need to leverage state evaporating funds. But, you know, there are things like the gas tax that we may be able to lobby for or try to encourage. There are other ways to generate revenue, such as a local option, sales tax or utility tax, but both of which are pretty regressive in that they affect more lower-income folks disproportionately. So there are ways to generate revenue, but we'll really need to try and advocate for state and federal funds to improve our roadways.
Thank you, Susan.
I think in general, most of our streets and roads are in pretty good shape. I do qualify that. Certainly, we have some that are not, and as I've been out visiting with people in the neighborhoods, that certainly has come up in some cases. What we tend to do in the city is the staff ranks our streets every year or two in terms of the quality. We see a map every once in a while when they're reporting back to us, and they're kind of graded by color, greens and yellows and reds. And they do the plan for repairs, asphalt overlays, et cetera, based on the quality of the roads. The idea is, you don't let them get so bad that it costs you a whole lot more to do the repairs. You don't want them to get that decrepit. But we don't keep up. We don't keep up with the streets. We don't keep up with the bridges. And again, this is an issue of reduced funds from both the state and federal level. We have limited resources in terms of what we can do, but I think that's also where continued economic development and increase in our tax base is absolutely essential, so we do have more revenues.
Angela?
I feel like we've made some steps to correcting some of the worst roads in Iowa City, but I know that there's a lot to be improved upon. And again, I think, I guess echoing the other candidates, we do need to focus on, I guess, kind of creative and new economic development in Iowa City to increase our tax base, to draw upon locally, I guess, to repair our roads, because it doesn't appear that we'll be getting state and federal funding for, I guess, not, it's not a priority, I guess, to everyone else, what our roads are like in Iowa City. But as a, as local leadership, we do need to focus on taking care of those that are in, like, highest need of repair and helping maintain our roads so that we don't need to do massive repairs.
Kinsley?
So, roads is a tough issue. You know, council looks at maps, that was just already previously mentioned. First and foremost, I want to shout out to city staff. You know, I'm not originally from here, and, you know, driving on, you know, the snow and the ice, they do a wonderful job of getting out and really removing a lot of that debris and everything else. And they've just done a wonderful job. I know that I've heard a lot of concerns from residents about our roads, but our city staff work a ton. And so, I just want to say that first off. Also, in talking with folks and door-knocking, focused on not only necessarily just repairs from a pothole standpoint, but also looking at stormwater runoff. I know that, thinking of one resident in particular, the Manville Knights neighborhood, spoke to me about the fact that, you know, they had done some repair on the road, but that particular repair had really lifted up the road so much that it wasn't draining correctly. And so, looking at the process by which we can contact or individuals feel comfortable contacting the city for repair or looking at those particular issues, I think is really important.
I think I can say, yes, it is our, some of the road need to be improved. We need to make sure our road is walkable, bikeable, and safe for our community. I like the Bike Master Plan that the current city council adopted, along with the road diet, that really has, you know, that's been adopted by the current city council. This is really good step to move forward. I know the funding could be a problem, but I will, you know, for this issue, I will make sure to make it priority and for the sake of the safety for our community, try to find those funding things.
Thank you, Ryan.
Oh, I was the first one to speak.
Did you start? Okay, good. So this is gonna be our last question. What is your position on supporting the Senior Center? We'll start with Susan. Sorry.
The Senior Center offers an incredible amount of programming, a great place for people to come together. And it is really a vital piece of the downtown area for a lot of people within Iowa City and even outside of Iowa City. We do have a challenge in terms of funding, like we do have with so many things. And I think we need to find efficiencies. That is an expensive old building. It's a beautiful, beautiful old building. But there are challenges with that. And I think we have to find ways that we can be more efficient, but maintain the programming that we have. We certainly have done some studies. We have raised some of the membership costs. We have raised some of the prices for some of the classes and things. We don't want to price people out. We have scholarships for people as well, to make sure that people can still afford to do it. But we have to prioritize that along with so many other things that we have in the community. And those are not easy decisions to make, but they're ones that we do have to as counselors.
Angela?
As a kid growing up in Iowa City, I used to volunteer and play my viola at the Senior Center. And in our kind of education of how our city and city staff work, that Ryan, Maza here, and I got to take, because we have not been on city council yet, we learned a lot from Linda about what the Senior Center has to offer to our community. And the number of people who walked through the doors and used the Senior Center was absolutely mind-blowing. And I think they, the Senior Center is welcoming to everyone, but welcoming to a population of people who still need a sense of place and a sense of belonging in our community. And I think it's important that we, as, not we, but city leaders, whoever is on city council, continues to support and make it a priority in creating and providing funding for the, to support the Senior Center.
Kinsley?
So I'm very supportive of the Senior Center. I've had multiple walkthroughs and, you know, I just am amazed, not only of our staff, that is really a small number of staff from a paid staff standpoint, that manages the entire program. And just a shout out to our volunteers that do a lot of work with the programming as well, a phenomenal job. I agree with what already been said, as far as looking at it from a funding challenge, wanting to ensure that we, you know, prioritize not only this effort, but looking at how we can really get the message out there that the Senior Center has been, can be used in different ways. I mean, I'll put myself out as far as forgetting sometimes, even when I'm thinking about places to hold different meetings, even from a school district standpoint, that the Senior Center could be used, and there could be some revenue streams from that standpoint. I do think, and I'll touch on this, it is a regional effort. I mean, the Senior Center is something that everybody accesses, and wanting to ensure that we look at it regionally is very important for me as well.
Thank you. Maza here?
I guess the Senior Center is really an important and valuable place, and adding, like, beautiful characters to the downtown. And just by talking to a lot of people during the farmer's market who come, like, around, and they told me that they're going to the Senior, they came to the Senior Center, or they go, they are, like, in a regular basis, and how they meet people together and enjoy their time. I guess this is, like, valuable bliss, and we have to continue to support it. And if, yes, we have to look for all the offer to support it, so we can keep it going and maintain it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ryan?
I will wholeheartedly support the Senior Center. And I think that although we have some budget challenges, we have to really give a huge shout out to the volunteers that we leverage to keep the place running. It's an incredible amount of volunteer hours, of unique volunteers that help out the Senior Center. And I think it speaks to a larger culture of volunteerism here in Iowa City. And I think that, you know, moving forward, how can we utilize the Senior Center more? I'm encouraged by programs like Dave Gould's Green Room, that has extended the university out into the community. And so, we're creating more of a community classroom. And I think that perhaps the Senior Center can provide facilities for more community classroom-esque events. And we always want to be conscious that, you know, we don't want this to be cost prohibitive. So I will continue to support sponsorships and to be able to extend this resource to not just a few, but to all members in the community. And if I still have time, I think it's, no, I don't have time.
No.
It's worth a shot. It's worth a shot.
All right. Susan, did you answer?
Yes, I started.
Awesome, good. Okay. Thank you all for providing questions to us to ask for the candidates. Right now it's about 8:12 PM and so now we're going to give all five candidates the opportunity to do a two-minute closing statements and we'll start with Angela.
Okay. I guess I don't know how many times we can say this, other than I think that the candidates running for our current election are a great representative and screenshot of what Iowa City is and what Iowa City has to offer and I don't see it as running against Kingsley or Mazza here, but running next to two people who I respect a lot in our community and I don't think we can go wrong with electing any of us that are up here. But we do need more diversity in our community's leadership and that means giving people who are, I guess, sorry, giving people who are, who represent a different population of our community a voice at the table is really important. As a young woman of color, growing up in Iowa City, I think overcoming some of the challenges were, sorry, were harder than maybe for other people, but I was able to because I live in a community that is supportive of making sure everyone is granted opportunities to be successful. And I think that as long as we continue to develop our economy in unique ways and integrating kind of our, sorry, like watching the time cards and, sorry, and really working on bridging kind of the gaps that we have in our various communities, university, the city, our county, working with everyone and increasing accessibility to leadership is really important and engaging young people so that we can keep young people here and keep our workforce growing as we allow for better economic development in Iowa City.
Thank you, Angela. Kingsley?
You just wasted 10 seconds.
All right. I want to, I want to be concise. You know, going back to the slogan, be informed, seek solutions. I'm dedicated to the work. You know, one of the comments, we were just talking about the LGBT task force was, I was not lamenting, but I was talking about the fact that this has been a stressful time for me, I'm not going to, I'm going to be very honest with you, running a campaign, having a full-time job, also being still on city council has been tough because I don't want to say no, I want to say yes to every single thing. That's the type of person I am. You know, dedication to the work from the standpoint of, you know, it's been just tough because I'm out in the community, not only from a job standpoint, but just, you know, if people have general concerns, I want to meet them at their doorstep and talk about those issues. That's what I've been doing for years now. And so, you know, one of the things I just talked about at a recent panel discussion was, the campaign seems to at times muddy some things from what was discussed before and then what's discussed now. One of the things that has consistently come up at the different forums that we've had have been affordable housing, have been economic development, have been mental health. Those are my three key issues, not because I just came out of the blue, it's because I door-knocked tons of doors, tons of doors, asking community members what their issues were and those are the issues that resonated with them. That's the type of dedication I'm talking about. I've been told that since I'm an incumbent, I probably shouldn't work that hard, but it's so important for me to get out there and talk to people at their doorstep and really hear clearly their issues and have them see my face. That's what you get when you, when you, if you elect me, that's what you get. When you see my campaign literature has my cell phone, I take calls on a regular basis on numerous different issues. I work my butt off and it's important for me to say that, not necessarily, just to say it because many of you may not know me and many of you may not see me, but I've worked with many of you on core issues that are not only important to you, but important to the entire Iowa City community. So I hope to have your vote on November 7th or before and I'm just excited to help the Iowa City community again.
Thank you. Mazza here?
Yes, you know, Iowa City really, in many ways, this election, yes, perhaps like any election, come and goes, come on, an important crossroad for our city and our nation. City need to take a lead and must take a lead now in an important issues and also to take a lead to an important issues so we can solve a lot of problem in this community right now, you know? I'm sorry, I have yet. I am very excited to be part of this, you know, historic moment and so we can keep our beloved Iowa City moving forward, especially for the people who really are being kept outside of the progress. And also to open the door for the council chamber to find a good solution and ideas, you know, to move our community forward and also to the challenge facing our city. And I really would like to move forward so we can have, everybody have a seat at the table. And I hope to gain your support and please vote for Mazza here Saleh at large seat at the city council on or before November 7th. Thank you everyone for coming. Thank you for the legal voter and the CTC, the Community Transportation Committee for building this together. Thank you so much and good night.
Good timing.
Ryan?
So I really want to express my gratitude that, to be able to be up here with, with all of you and to be up here with some amazing candidates for city council is really a humbling experience for me. You know, I think that if we are to be a community really leading the way, we need to include new and young voices at the table. We need to be pushed on issues that we don't think, that we are uncomfortable with, we need to be raising issues that really matter to working people, to low-income folks, to the most vulnerable in our communities. And so I think that I'm bringing to the table experience that matters, being a working poor college student, working in AmeriCorps, having to live off food stamps. I can't say that I've experienced the worst that humanity has to offer, but I've seen it happen to others and it, that has motivated me to take action and that's why I'm here before you today. Because I think that we live in troubling times and it's really difficult for many people to, to see hope or have optimism about, about our outlook. And especially when we think about climate change and racism and all of these terrible things facing our humanity, we really need to be innovative in how we tackle these issues and who we're bringing to the table to take them on. And so by voting Ryan Hall, by supporting my campaign, you're supporting young people in our community who have not had a voice on city council, you're supporting students who don't have a voice, you're supporting those who really have not been given an opportunity to have, to have a council opportunity. And I think that we need to open the doors to politics to new and young people because our, all politics is local, but we need to transform us, our politics at the state and federal level and that's what I hope to offer here locally and beyond this community because we need to extend democracy to all of those who has, it's been stripped from. Thank you.
Susan?
Want to thank the league and thank the transportation committee for putting on tonight's function and certainly for everybody who's out here and those people who will be watching on TV. As I mentioned earlier, I've been in this community for a long time. I don't take my age versus Ryan's as a detriment to, to being on city council. In fact, I think the experience that I bring to the table in terms of making policy, in terms of analyzing issues with my engineering background, I could, I look at large sets of information, have a knack for kind of getting through to what's really important in those, have the experience of talking and listening with people and, and coming up with collaborative solutions across the board, have the connections in the community to talk to other people who are working on those same kinds of things and want to find those solutions. One of the things we haven't really talked much about tonight is economic development and it's crucial for this community. We, we have a lot of, as we say, working-class people in this community and one of the things that we have to make sure of as we look at that economic development is that we are in fact increasing our tax base so that we can continue our revenue streams and grow our property tax revenue stream to continue to support the kinds of services that everybody in this community wants, but are especially important for the working class. We talk about transportation, we talk about trying to find more jobs. I'm working with a group right now in terms of looking at, we've, in this community, we have a lot of jobs in the service area, which are the lower-income jobs, we have a lot of jobs that are very high-paying from the university, professional people, connecting people to the trades, to those skilled jobs that you can't outsource that are really important for this area. I have those kinds of connections that experience in terms of policymaking, experience working with people that I think will allow us to move forward in a lot of ways that people have not necessarily thought about and talked about. So certainly appreciate your support on or before November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you to all of the candidates for their closing statements. Thank you to our co-sponsor, the Community Transportation Committee, the candidates, the audience and those watching at home, and the staff of local television for making this videocast possible. We would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and that sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. Remember, your vote is your voice. Let's all speak up together and exercise our constitutional right. Remember to vote on or before November 7th. Thank you all so much and good night.